It's seven o'clock.
The anticipation is to help with that.
I think we need that or...
I think we need it in class.
Okay, seven o'clock by my watch.
Seven o'clock, six o'clock.
Okay.
You forgot to wear your shirt.
Did you notice my hair is darker?
Mayor Sully, Mr. Bernthal, Ms. Thompson, Mr. DeLeo, Mr. DiPortaire, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Youngblood.
Notice that this meeting required the Bernthal news, Curry news, Sauer ledger, Fox news so far, and personal news will hold until January 15, 2017. Please hold on for a second.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the right, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight we have honor, recognizing honor in Sandy Jones as Borough Clerk for her 27 years of service at the Borough. We have home merely high for here this evening. I'm going to read a proclamation if the record. A proclamation of the Mayor of Bernthal. Whereas Sandy Jones began employment at the Borough of Bernthal on September 10, 1990 as Borough Clerk and Assistant Administrator. And whereas Sandra is a Regional Municipal Clerk, Certified Municipal Clerk, and Master Municipal Clerk. And whereas Sandra will retire in June 2017 after 37 years of municipal government, 36 years of municipal government in the Borough of Chester with the Borough of Bernthal over 27 years. And whereas Sandra's statutory duties as Municipal Clerk have included, one, secretary to the Municipal Corporation and custody of municipal seal and records of municipal corporation; two, secretary of the governing body, preparing meeting agendas, attending all meetings, preparing minutes at said meetings, retaining the original copies of all records of the municipality; and three, serving as chief administrative officer in all elections, serving as the responsible party to the acceptance of applications and issuing licenses and permits where appropriate; and serving as coordinator and records manager responsible for implementing all archives and record detention programs. And whereas Sandra's duties as Assistant Administrator have included serving as office manager, personnel administrator, internal savings committee chair, and numerous other duties that were assigned. And whereas over her 27 years of employment at the Borough of Bernthal, Sandra has worked with seven members, 34 council members, and served as chief administrative officer in over 60 elections. And whereas as records manager, Sandra headed the Harris Plan Records Project at Bernthal and assisted Bernthal departments in effectively managing public records for creation, state approval, proof disposition, and ensure preservation and accessibility to those records. And whereas Sandra is a member and past president of some recent county clerks association, the Municipal Clerks Association of New Jersey, an international institute of municipal clerks. And whereas through her employment, Sandra was conscientious, well organized, and assisted members of the public, always addressing issues and taking care of them in courteous and skillful manner. Now therefore, I, Kevin Sully, Mayor, by the authority vested in me and representing the Borough Council of the Borough of Bernthal, would hereby congratulate Sandy Jones on her accomplishments and wish her the best of luck in her retirement. And congratulations.
Thank you very much. Oh, very nice.
Okay, this is presented to Sandy Jones, Borough Clerk of Minutes, Assistant Administrator, in recognition and appreciation for your 27 years of outstanding service at the Borough of Bernthal.
Thank you so much. Very nice, thank you. Okay, here's one quickly, I guess they always do.
Any words before you shut down the company?
Oh, well, um... Yeah, I figured out, I figured out today that I've attended at least 650 council meetings in Bernthal. That doesn't include special meetings and it doesn't include council meetings in Chester. So altogether, there have been a lot of meetings. I've served with us, the proclamation said, seven mayors, 34 members of the Borough Council, two borough attorneys, numerous professional services contractors, volunteers on boards, committees, commissions, school, county, and state officials, fellow municipal clerks throughout the state, countless members of the public and the business community, and certainly not last, but not least, all the former and current employees of the Borough. That's a lot of people and this has been a special place to work. So thank you for 27 years.
Is that Sandy?
Oh, yeah, the only thing I can mention about Sandy is how amazing she was is that if you go and look at her desk, you wonder how the work gets done because there's nothing on her desk. But the work gets done and it gets done and it's amazing. So congratulations.
It's all piled away waiting to be picked out of drawers.
Yeah, congratulations during her tenure.
Thank you, Sandy. All right, we're ready to resume again. We move on in two more minutes, maybe 20 seconds. Andrew Fox, 17, in attendance. So we've seen on our stand podium, Mr. Schmidt, seven. Second members of the Youngblood, Al Fayr, opposed. Sandy should be out of that. All right, open session. At this point, we leave the mayoral council open comments. The elected members of the public must take a word meeting. Commit their afternoon formal visit to the Congress. Speaker shall enter their comments in five minutes. They're bringing forward a prepared statement. She should write a copy and email copy to the folks who will take it in your comments. So maybe probably within a minute. Any other public question we heard? Yes.
Mr. Mayor and Council, on behalf of the fire department and first aid squad in town, we wish to acknowledge Sandy's retirement.
Oh, thank you so much. Very nice, thank you.
Kristy McDonald, 59 Anderson Hill Road. And I'm not here to talk about the Okafor ordinance right now, even though that's such an important thing to us all. And I'm really just here to thank Sandy for all the wonderful work she has done. Since I've been on the Environmental Commission, I've just been blown away with how helpful and organized and really just a caring person Sandy is. I think she's going to be very missed by our municipality. And I hope she enjoys the next chapter of her life in Florida and Colorado. Thank you very much, Sandy.
Thank you, Kristy.
Sandy will miss you. I know I will. Okay, Skip Boers, I live in Bernthal. I just have a couple of questions on some of these ordinances, tonight, the salary ordinances. And specifically the one for patrolmen and detectives, the one for sergeants and lieutenants, and of course, the one for the Borough dispatchers. I did some quick math for the, if it passes tonight, we have 11 patrolmen and detectives. That includes the one that's with the ard, that means he resigned, but you're going to leave the spot and you're going to replace it, is what I thought. And the other one was on the Borough dispatchers. You only have like three or four names and there's eight positions. So there are eight positions or only three?
There is three full-time. I believe they're looking for a fourth and then there is, those are all substitutes.
So this is, the total amount here is not going to be the total salaries for the year? It'll be a portion of it?
No, that's just a scale and people move around. Hire people.
Okay, and then on all of these, so on all of these with the patrolmen, the detectives, and the dispatchers, and the sergeants and lieutenants, what approximate additions would there be for benefits and overtime?
Well, the overtime budget for the police salaries is about 100, I believe this year it's about 110,000 total. For the dispatchers, I believe it's about, I think about $20,000. I'm not quite as sure about that number, Skip, but I can...
But you're, it's only four full-time, not eight full-time?
No, no, there's only four. There's only four full-time.
Okay, and what about benefits? I'm more interested in that. So multiplier like 50% or 20%?
The multiplier that is used generally is about 30%.
That's it? Okay, and that includes the pension cost and...
Pension, Social Security.
Health benefits?
Health benefits, it's not a per se, no, it's not to the penny, but it's a standard that's used.
And with the dispatchers, what kind of equipment budgets do they get a year?
It's their operational budget is very small. I believe it's about $8,000.
That's it?
Yeah.
Wasn't there a line item about two years ago? I think in the 2015 budget, it was either 21,000? It might have been a little more than that.
I can go down, when we're done, I can go down and give the budget and give you the exact numbers.
But the number here, which you're telling us for 19, is $414,543. But that is only if you had eight full-time dispatchers, which you can't have.
Yeah, no, we don't have it.
You can't?
Yeah, we don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? One more time, anyone else in the public? Sitting in the house on the lot of ordinances? Okay, we're going, under your public hearing can remove all ordinance 17745, adopted in all testing regulation and amendments supplemented in Chapter 14 of the Land Development Regulations entitled Environmental Regulations. Entertaining motion between the public hearing and the public assembly?
Somebody?
Move on Mr. Gerberon, second.
I'll second.
Second one, Mr. Sullivan, all in favor?
I understand the public is worried. The reason is that the congressman who's down the deal found we're doing everything on vacation.
And Jack, we feel confident that he'll have that ready as well?
Yes, I spoke to him the day after the last meeting and he told me then he was going to be on vacation. He could not happen by tonight, but he waited by the July meeting.
Ten. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the eyes have it. Right, I understand the motion, remove that ordinance 17746, salary ordinance for sergeants and lieutenants of the Bernthal Police Department, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to the law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 p.m., July 10, 2017. Move on Mr. Gerberon, second.
Second.
Second one, Mr. Youngblood, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the eyes have it. Right, I understand the motion, remove that ordinance 17747, salary ordinance for patrolmen and detectives from the Bernthal Police Department, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to the law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 p.m., July 10, 2017. Move on Mr. Schmidt, second one, Mr. Gerberon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the eyes have it. Right, I understand the motion, remove that ordinance 17748, salary ordinance for Borough dispatchers or members of the IBW Local Eleven Committee, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to the law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 p.m., July 10, 2017. Move on Mr. Gerberon, second. Second one, Mr. DeLeo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the eyes have it. Can we move on to resolutions? We have resolution 17129 and 17135. Anyone want to form any questions or comments? You good, Peter?
All right, 179235.
Okay, move on, Mr. Youngblood, I'll second. Second one, Mr. DiPortaire, hold call please.
Mr. Bernthal?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeo?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
All right, move on to item nine, reports. And report initial attorney, didn't have any determining report?
Question, topic of the close, Skip, nothing?
What else?
My question.
And Mr. Gerberon, also closing, question? All right, 9B. Any other reports, Council Public Safety Committee?
Yeah, we started a meeting while we were, had looked at the matter and discussed, but the chief is at a conference and I was unable to get them back. So probably we can still have a next meeting in that.
All right, and what else? All right, 9C, Finance Administration Committee?
Uh, we're just having a meeting, but there are other people that's getting a little bit difficult, so we're going to try again.
Wednesday hopefully.
Wednesday hopefully.
All right, here is the comment. I see, and then 9D, Council on Gearing and Technology, Public Works.
Sure, so Public Works, meeting on display. Basically, hi-do, we're pretty much ready to get started. Looks like beginning of July, early August should be the completion date.
Just curving the stage.
Curving the pavement there. John also brought forth, a new trail on the bridge. They've got a new suggestion. Since we're only about less than 18 inches over the string, level of the string, they've got a proposal utilizing some existing structure, let's say, around, natural. And you're going to see two spans. That's the biggest, you know, you ever come in?
It's, I was there last week. It's been some time with Mark Anderson. They also, fine.
So just this one, you know, it'd be very, a lot of handrails. And the else, also, I don't think we need the permit. So looks like, he's talking about a precision, $8,000 to $10,000 range. So there's a massive reduction. If it doesn't work, hey, great. You can always come to something a little more substantial next time. But it looks like that may be...
Try to work to make the plan of your foot.
Use the other money budget to start with the trails and around it.
Right, so he's working on that. Obviously, you can see that everything's coming together quickly in terms of the site improvements here at the municipal building. We went to discuss the Dylan Page projects for 2017. He's still tweaking those, but pretty much got his list total. It looks like that's going to be about. I think we were in the six online miles, but again, John's still working on putting that list together. Terms of the field, the polo, pre-construction meeting at the county was on the 14th. They're anticipating to get started this week in terms of, obviously, I have to wait until school's out, but putting up the soap fences and everything.
Looks like they won't go for the survey and things.
Right.
Mark supplies it.
Do you want to talk about the request for the Saturday? Or do that, it's on the agenda, we'll do that later?
Yeah.
Tell me anything you want to talk about on the library side of the generator?
Yeah, moving forward with the generator. Right now, we're in the process of trenching in front of the building, the electrical conduit that's going to come from the generator and the pad. The next step would be the start of the gas service to the generator. So we have been uncovering some unidentified...
Unidentified machines?
Yes. And so we're doing, you know, we're managing that. We really don't have a good set of backs built for a lot of errands, so a lot of these things are kind of, you know, we find out in the field. But, you know, we're getting there and so far, nothing that's going to do that.
And I saw you emailed facilities report this afternoon. Anything to highlight there?
The roof? You see that, as Phil had mentioned, the site improvement project outside, so we're about 95% completed with the r-scape, about 85% completed, the irrigation system. Building's painted, we listed the boat house, you know, the dry stack wall that began plus the front entrance. That should be done in about two weeks. You can see the plantings are starting to go in and we coordinated that between the irrigation specialist and the plantings, so we should have all of it in and everything working by this weekend. By July 14th, it should be substantially complete. We already have the wiring for the lighting, consol for the parking lot. And the pictures are here, so we can installation of that. And we've got some of the lightings around through the blockway. And then we have the Dylan Page parking lot, so we should have a stand-up future.
Do we have a date for the paving yet?
We do not.
Because we're going to do a bunch of projects at once, right?
I think we talked about that.
Well, this is going to be the reclamation, so it's...
Well, right, we're going to do that at the same time we did Berkshire and... Right, Post Kuhne.
Post Kuhne, we did Dylan Page, Berkshire was a reclamation.
So we're at the parking lot at the same time?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So what did I, I'm sorry?
Great list here, and there's a lot of activity and...
Yeah, we talked about the generator. Been doing some work on the Public Works building here, roof leaks, things like that. Doing work around the parts, came dugouts, repairing dugouts, took care of the pritit, claremont.
Some of that.
Some of that. And then Public Works went over with the lawn firs. Were able to be behind the claremont hill.
Oh, years, years of lawn?
Behind and then...
Around the...
Yes, we manually cut the pritit, but then use the lawn firs to provide. Also, that will not be done with claremont. Claremont hill there. We did have, we had a few leaks from our gas system. So we had a new heater and a new regular put on the gas company and we did that for us. We moved some additional recycling. We set the both to the possible course. This year, we have a new contract for cleaning of the pool facilities, the restaurants and everything. We still haven't reported it. That's really, that's really working out well. Really picked up the quality of the cleaning and everything.
And the last issue really from Public Works, we have found a fairly substantial destabilization of white neck rhodan. It's, we're getting a big washout on this side of the bridge. So it's going to be an emergency project and we're going to have to take care of this year. Rough estimate from engineering is approximately $85,000 the time you shore up and then redo that. So working with John to see where that is in the budget. They have to, you know, pull something off of one of the other projects for this year. That's, better take cussing, it's in pretty bad shape. So that'll be an unplanned project. So we have the quotes we need to throw out. This was just the engineer's estimate. You know, they'll go out and start to get quotes for this, so it's just preliminary at this point. And that's it from Public Works, unless any questions?
Sorry, Mr. Gerberon?
Paper?
All right, 9D, I'll listen to the information report.
Yeah, page back, nothing really new. Just working towards, there's going to be a farmer's market and a couple of events, educational letter going on this summer. Then we're working toward historic downtown. Hopefully sometime, I think in October. On Shade Tree, continuation of discussion from last council meeting, we had the gentleman from 17 Prospect, who was here about reimbursement from the tree. So John's not here to talk about that. Shade Tree discussed it. It's a bit of a gray area. Real question is, as a council, are we going to authorize reimbursement to resident, editor, so, and listen to that? Is everybody aware of that? Or... So President at 17 Prospect had a tree that he wanted to remove. So he got the application through Shade Tree. Inspector went out, looked at the tree, gave him permission to take it down in accordance with the permit. He also had a lot of trimming work done on his property. Realized after the fact that the tree was probably in the right of way and as a normal course, we probably should have been advised that the Borough would have taken that down or at least worked on the tree as part of our ongoing maintenance. So he has asked us to reimburse him for the $2,000 expense that he had personally removing the tree. We felt that $2,000 was not just the removal of that tree, but also some additional work on his property. Had we done the actual work, our costs probably would have been less. We could probably take a tree down for about $1,200, given the tree the size. There's also a little question, now that everything's been removed and stuff's spinning around, was it actually in the right of way? And I'm not sure, that's been definitely settled one way or the other. John also thought that we may have pruned it. It wasn't a hazard or we would immediately take it down. John thought we may have pruned it, waited a couple of years to see what happened. Had that been the case, our expense for that tree would probably have been about $500. So I think Shade Tree felt, it sounds like it's a tree we probably should have addressed rather than leaving it to the homeowner. And they were comfortable somewhere at, you know, $500 to $1,200 range, but certainly not the $2,000 we requested of Essex.
I think our bid price is about $900 for a tree on the state.
Yeah.
Yes, isn't the definition of the right of way, it's not our property, we're allowed to go in there if we need to?
That's correct.
Because the property line would go out to the street, so technically, it's the property owner's responsibility. owner's responsibility. Would it be similar to sidewalk?
Well, not totally analogous.
Okay.
The borough may be responsible for a safety hazard for a tree in the right of way, but as Bill was just saying, the fact that maybe some branches should have been pruned doesn't mean we would have taken it down. So I've got a problem with the process more than, you know, the fact that maybe it's the borough's responsibility. You know, if in fact a request had been made to the borough to remove it, it could have been inspected and determined whether it wasn't the right of way, and what had to be done from a safety standpoint.
All of them.
As opposed to an aesthetic standpoint.
Right, we had discussed that, and that was kind of committee's feeling as well, that it should have been, it should have been addressed at the, at the time of the permit as to whether or not it was ours or, you know, so...
Was he informed of...
No. He was just, we, you know, we issued a permit and didn't offer any advice about what we would have done with the tree. So we can, we can kind of argue both sides. John did, the tree did have some damage. There were some holes, some open lot visible, so we would have done something, you know, potentially pruning, maybe not, you know, taking the whole thing down. But there was evidence that, you know, the tree's not, was not entirely healthy.
And the gentleman did when it came to, basically, he had safety concerns with it.
So maybe we can give him the five hundred dollars a little bit for pruning. Certainly, I don't know if the full dollar amount of his expense also included other work, and we don't know exactly what this...
He didn't work on Clermont's building? He advised Bill that he presented to us, so he must have just treated it more like pruning of other trees and other property, so it was all right. He could have given him almost nine hundred dollars.
So remove probably more.
And, I don't know, call the rapport that guy, is it?
Is that in the group's category?
No.
I got stuck on, that two thousand, you didn't include grinding. So we need, we need a dollar amount, you know, or no?
Based on what Jack said, we tend to be responsible all for safety. So if we go around and we say that, you know, we trimmed it up for five hundred dollars, I would think that would be our responsibility for it.
I remember saying that was calling to trim it, because I can't even, this tree's dead, it couldn't come down. Yeah, it was the tree company that told him it was dead. He reasoned he wanted to have it trimmed, which is why I think if she could hide it, I suppose, the company would go back to them and say, oh, the other thing's done, how much was it just for the tree?
The other thing too, we need to assist the public media, so everybody can show the tree well and handled it.
That's our responsibility. Jack, in other towns, where they deal with situations like this, like...
Well, I mean, the process usually is, it has to be submitted, the request has to be submitted ahead of time.
Right. Have you ever seen anything like this?
After the fact, no.
No.
Right, doesn't mean it didn't happen.
And I'm not sure our perspective is... Shade Tree Commission.
If what I heard is right, he pruned another tree which would have been about five hundred dollars, right? He pruned a tree that, we don't know if it was good enough, whatever, lasted a year or two, whatever, we figured that'd be about five hundred dollars. The grinding, what is it, three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars? And the removal of the rest of the tree, six hundred dollars?
I'm not sure they really grind the stumps and things like that.
I'm just saying it's part of that price, it is low sum, I would think. So if you, if you pull that out, you know, three, four hundred dollars for stump grinding, you pull out the five hundred dollars for trimming, what would be...
Five hundred dollars is probably, you know, supposed to be...
So I'd like to propose that we refund the resident five hundred dollars that we would have spent to do the pruning of the tree. And that'd be advised by our inspector.
I'm with you on that proposal.
And the one with, I think, is that the update process internal, if it's right of way, it has to be the permit, the permits are being issued.
Good, because the other point about the Shade Tree Commission is, it's like roofs. We may have more dead trees than we have in the budget to remove.
Right.
So the Shade Tree Commission's going to make a value judgment as to which one should come down this year, which one should come down next year.
Right.
All right, so I have a motion by Bill Youngblood, reimbursing five hundred dollars, sent by Mr. Deport here. Roll call.
Mr. Bernbaum?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeo?
Yes.
Mr. Di Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I'm staying.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
And last item from Shade Tree, we are, we are continuing to work on improving. We're looking for another volunteer inspector. The Shade Tree Commission has always utilized volunteers to do our inspections, which obviously saves the borough quite an expense. We have a little bit of a gap now between about two individuals that are doing it, just being able to respond in a timely fashion. So Shade Tree doesn't want, and we've discussed the possibility of turning those responsibilities over to a borough employee, but they would prefer at this point, and I agree with them, to try to keep that as a volunteer position, so that they can find somebody else qualified in town to be able to assist with that. And if that changes, you know, we have to come back and add that to another inspector. For now, we'll try to keep that as a volunteer. And we understand that we need to kind of tighten up those procedures a little bit and do a better job.
I tend to be, and it seems that there's certain, two inspectors, some overlap, some things being done twice, and as I've talked about before, I hate this time, I think I should move it internally, and I think we need to address the three, we have concerns on about losing control, except that losing control is just that we need to have someone that's, has to do it in, you know, a couple of days at the longest with somebody who wants to treat that. And also, the people who are familiar with the properties and might be identified with locations and things like that, and things that you left, Phil, I ask, is that the problem? It's certainly a problem. So someone that's getting a permit for two or three, or fifteen trees, there's no documentation on a very, a accident, a few extra, which is a problem. I, you know, not for making this thing heard, but for, you know, it's pretty clear, there's lots of rumors and lots of actual stories and documentation about the system. And I think the word is to probably simplify personally, but, you know, better have a better child, do a better job in this sense. There's about a hundred permits a year, I believe.
I'll tell you.
And we can talk about this more in maybe personnel, but I think we've got a couple of, well, I can't, it's Wednesday, so maybe a little Wednesday, because, you know, if we know that certain things have to be done, then it's going to be very difficult these days to post where the requests are and the staff that's going out with the various inspectors and inspection centers, building the apartment or a tiny, you know, just include that on their, on their resume. But I could be oversimplified, that's why we talked about it a little bit. I'm still worried about adding volunteer employees who get to, they've done their job over the years, you know, you incur certain penalties when things come wrong, and I don't know how to rate the insurance regard, it is just, represents a problem, yeah. I can, you know, the Jordan. Another thing, I guess I forgot.
Yes. All right, anyone else? All right, any other community reports? I see number items of business. Okay, Public Works, I intend, we have Saturdays, construction operations, favor requests from the county and the department, basically addressing the construction of the field of the holograms. In the event that they fall behind schedule, the weather, however, the community is requesting from June twenty-second to October tenth of two thousand and seventeen, permission to work on Saturdays from the hours of seven AM to three thirty PM. Basically, it says that the contractor does not currently plan to work on weekends, this is a cram for measure to the project fall behind schedule. Can they do it eight to four?
Seven to four.
I know what you said.
At least it's sound.
Eight to four. I mean, I think, at least, you know, by spirit of the ordinance, you know. Everywhere I work...
We usually go to eight o'clock.
All right, so that one, Saturday construction.
Will you modify some advancement activities?
I think it's a good idea too, at least for Cheryl too, in case there's something really going on over there.
But it's been a political concern.
Well, I mean, the other fields, I mean, if you have another game or something that's really important and there's a lot of equipment and machinery and dust, it might ruin the whole fair. All right, so we'll modify the discussion, eight to four. Eight to four. Do a pre-notification. And a notification to Cheryl if at all possible. All right. To on my recreation, the format and...
Doug, do you think that works? Yes, absolutely.
All right. Jack, anything else?
No, that sounds good.
All right, one paper?
All right.
Oppose, staying out of the habit. All right, ten B, expansion, deer management, Little Brook Sanctuary. Um, Jack, we don't have to do it, isn't it? You can be there.
We don't have to do anything with the ordinance, because as I explained last time, the ordinance only applies to borough property, and moreover, it doesn't even specify the borough properties. So it's really just a policy decision whether you want to allow it to expand into Little Brook Sanctuary.
All right, you have a hundred acre tract of land.
And the proposed deer management plan in your pocket?
Right, that, that's, that's the seventeen eighteen proposal, correct?
Yes. It's the same on the contractors. Same transfer.
Jack, any public hearing on this, or it's just something we can vote on?
No, no public hearing here.
The county has asked for any additional...
No, nothing.
...to sort of come out. All right. One paper?
Aye.
Oppose, staying out of the habit. Ten C, corresponding, we have done, I would, item number eleven, second open session in the meeting, anybody in the public who should be heard.
Thank you. I understand the community's, uh, looking space, um, see, matching grant five hundred thousand dollars, so that if we spend a dollar, eight dollar match to that, so basically, we kind of probably, we will get anywhere from the funds that are done, certain law people, but, Mr. Grant, I think he's done a ton of work, he helped with different programs, approved it, we did, we had lots of steps and lots of things that had to be done to get this done, and of course, everybody here voted for it. And Ralph's department and Sandy, because we had one of our employees in the heat of the summer in the attic last year, having dead records to help put together the materials for the, uh, documentation process. So a lot of people weren't very hard to get.
Peter, is there any time limit or restrictions on that? We don't use it by a certain...
You're right, they have to leave us three years, but unless they want to reallocate, the state wants to reallocate, or we're not doing anything, the risk of that happening in three years is far from that.
So that's from the attachment grant?
Yes. We imagine for purposes, but we never, no, but we never had any matches at all, so if we ever spent a dollar, we spent a dollar. Now, if we spend a dollar, it's fifty cents, and theoretically, in other organizations that develop relationships, we can also allocate some of their green money to that, so it's possible to actually, plus a specific, plus a percentage of acquisition. Position under the state long-term policy, I believe, the tourist has the most successful largest open space acquisition for America in the entire country, including California. That might be done based on square meters for area, I'm not sure if you have the, you know, standing policy regarding pulp packs or buffers and...
We got a show.
Uh, yes, I met with Doug this morning, and the resident who was concerned about conditions at Kiwanis Park, who spent quite a bit of time there. Doug has a short-term plan well in hand, maybe had that in mind when he assessed his first budget last year, but the condition is, is pretty horrible, unsafe, pensions and all kinds of stuff, and I think it's seen more, it's happened a long time, just stuff that's created and then ignored forever until it's just a disaster to try and recover. And it's something we'll have to talk about, it's a process. Along with that, however, was a request that we possibly tap into a lot of tree fund, I don't know if it's okay or not, to help plant some trees, help bring the adjacent plant, you know, some station, and make here...
You're going to want to clear, was that to make sure that the trees are over and push into it and then...
I also think that the, John has done some plantings this year, both around Clermont Stash and over on Hall Road, there have been two projects that he's worked on, and he had intended to do some plantings up in Kiwanis, but I think the request that's come in is for a much different type of tree.
Yeah.
And so I'm not, I, some of, it might be that Shade Tree is going to object to the type of tree they're putting in, but I'll leave that to the arborists.
Yeah, we discussed that, and that there are other, you know, things, and it might accomplish some of the...
New Jersey Transit, though.
Yeah. Yeah, and we got, yeah, we're probably as well, so that's what I feel. I mean, there are actually some gorgeous old trees there, some licensed reversion of, it's just a, I said, let's see, this big masking of back door, it's a little not, it's a little out of the field. It's all over the road, we used to currently, it was a security, but some time ago, for some improvement that was not completed or something.
Parkland?
In the parking lot.
Yeah, that was done two years ago.
It's done two years ago? Was that a road?
No, it was named mine service.
Oh, that's, it wasn't that?
It wasn't, it was...
So to the, to those trees, John's aware, we have discussed church room.
Okay, I mean, this, but that is actually, it's, it's over in the invasive species of our states, it's basic species list, and it's something that actually spreads very fast and you can't even use the inside, because it's so resistant.
They've been there for a long time.
Once there's one piece of it, then it's going to be crazy.
Yeah, you do the park on there?
Yeah, and then it's like, there you go, and then you're turf and everything.
That whole area is totally overlooked.
Yeah, you can't use a regular herbicide, because it doesn't respond. All right, and you... No, I'm sorry, oh, you want some goodness? Sorry, just happened, you know.
They had money, dollars, so, good, you started one.
What's happening, dogs fix those up?
Anyone else in the open session?
Anyone else in the open session, talking about? Seeing that a whole people in session, I'm just hearing most people, you want, whole session to discuss personnel matters and question, you want your turn to be a lawyer. Ralph, would you call me on a personnel matter topic? Possibly.